Welcome, everybody. This is the 31st meeting of the 22nd Council, and it will come to order. Counselor Benton is excused tonight, so I will be chairing the meeting. So, everybody, please be nice.[14.83][14.83](Laughter.) We are going to have a moment of silence, and then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Scout Troop 216. And we also have another Scout Troop visiting, that is Troop 205 La Cueva, Scout Leader, Mr. McGee. Scout Leader McGee. So, thank you all for being here. So, stand for a moment of silence, and we'll do the pledge.[34.54][34.54](Pause.)
Mr. Vice President, I want to introduce Scouts from Troop 216 from LDS. Their Scout Master, Mr. Joe Foster, brought them down tonight, and we got to meet upstairs earlier. They're from an LDS church in Counselor Harris's district. And Trevor from 216 is going to lead us, along with the members of the troop, in the pledge tonight. Gentlemen, go ahead.
Will the audience please stand? Salute. Please repeat after -- please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The audience, please.
Thank you all very much. Just a reminder, Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the sign-in table. We will take a break at approximately 7:00 this evening. So, again, we want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible, so please do not make any personal attacks, no applause or outbursts, so that we can get this meeting run through and do the people's business. So, next thing is we're going to go to proclamations and presentations, and Counselor Jones is going to start.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This evening, we have a proclamation for recognizing the victims of violent crime. And here to accept the proclamations, if you'll step up and come up here in front of the podium, are Patricia Caristo, Director of Resource Center for Victims of Violent Crime; Joan Shirley, Certified Victim Advocate and Mother of a Murdered Son; Kevin Shirley; Ossie Levy or Levi.
She isn't here.
Okay, then, good. It's not bad that I messed up her name, then, thank you. Frank Zubia, Director of the New Mexico Crime Victims Reparation Commission; and Jacqueline Sanchez, Restitution and Recovery Officer. I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas every year in April, the National Office of Victims of Crime helps lead communities throughout the country in their annual observances of National Crime Victims Rights Week, which will be observed in 2017 on April 2nd through 8th. And whereas this year's theme is strength, resilience, justice; and whereas providing victims with knowledge of their rights and available services further strengthens their ability to recover by restoring a sense of self-empowerment. And whereas victims of violent death are the ultimate victims, there is no reparation for the loss of life to violence. And the impact of a violent death on the family, friends, and the community is immediate, long-term, and forever. And whereas, for every victim of death to violence, there are at least 10 people who must deal with the aftermath. And whereas the Albuquerque City Council wishes to recognize the mission and victim advocacy of the Resource Center for Victims of Violent Crime or Violent Death and the Crime Victims Reparation Commission of New Mexico, be it proclaimed that the Council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes those citizens dealing in the aftermath of violence and death, and all victims of crime, asking that strength, resilience, and justice be afforded to them. Welcome. And if any of you would like to speak up and say anything, would you like to?
Good afternoon, and thank you. My name is Frank Zubia. I'm the Director for the New Mexico Crime Victims Reparation Commission. For those victims that we actually provided services for, we received over 3,000 applications in fiscal year 2016, and we dispensed money in the amount of $486,000 for homicides in the state of New Mexico in 2016. We assisted families of violent death, 164 families to be -- to provide you some detailed information. But in addition to that, we provide services to all victims of crime, and we also dispense federal money and state money to about 145 organizations throughout the state that assist victims of crime in every facet. And we want to thank you all for this proclamation.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good afternoon. Thank you for taking your time to do this, Trudy. We appreciate this so very much. This is very thoughtful of this body to recognize our agency as well as victims of crime. The Resource Center of -- (coughs) excuse me, asthma. The Resource Center for Victims of Violent Death has been in existence for five years, and we have served about 384 individuals, of which that's one person out of all of those 10 people. So, as families, we've served many, many more. And that is a very small percentage of the victims in this state, which is usually around 200 every year since at least 2005 when we started counting. So, there are a lot of people who are affected by violent death, those who will survive an attempted violent death, those who don't know if it was a violent death, and those who believe that a suicide is actually a homicide. So, those are the families we serve, and we thank you for supporting the work that we do.
Thank you, and thanks for all the work you do. Would you all like to come forward? And we'd love to shake your hands and give you a couple of the proclamations.[417.22][417.22](Applause.)
And now, we're going to turn it over to Counselor Gibson for a proclamation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President. Tonight, we have a proclamation for some individuals who are here in the audience. I wonder if you would mind stepping forward? We have Manjit Kar. Let's see if I can read my handwriting here. Aiyaram Singh, Kulmit Singh, Devinder Singh, and Harjeen Kar. Forgive me for slaughtering your names if I have done so. But thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to read this proclamation, and then if you'd like to say a few words after that, that would be fine. I just wanted to mention that I did visit your Gurudwara. I believe it was two years ago. I think we figured that out on Mother's Day, and felt very welcome there, and a very good vibe, as they say, in your place. So, I'll go ahead and read this proclamation for you. Whereas Sikhism is a religion founded in the Punjab region of South Asia over five centuries ago, introduced to the United States in the 19th century. And whereas Sikhism is the fifth-largest world religion, and approximately 25 million adherents from diverse backgrounds throughout the world, including 500,000 adherents in the United States. And whereas Sikhs in the United States pursue diverse professions in all walks of life, making rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, including a service as patriotic members of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas Sikh Americans in Albuquerque and the state of New Mexico continue to make significant contributions toward the economic progress as professionals, business entrepreneurs, and healers. And whereas Vaisakhi is one of the most religiously significant days in Sikh history, commemorating the creation of the Kalsa, a fellowship believing in oneness of humanity, by Guru Gobind Singh in 1699. And whereas the Sikh religion is based on a belief in one God and the equality of all human beings. And whereas the celebration of Vaisakhi includes performing Seva, which is selfless service, such as providing free meals to all visitors to Sikh Gurudwara, the house of worship. Be it proclaimed that the Council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, hereby wishes the Sikh-American community of Albuquerque a joyous Vaisakhi, and encourages all citizens to come together, united, under a banner of solidarity for our collective peace, security, harmony, and understanding. So, again, thank you for being here. Do any of you want to say a few words?
Thank you. It's been quite some time since I've been to the City Council chamber, so thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to just introduce Devinder Singh. He's the President of our Gurudwara, and he's also a water engineer. Kulmeet Singh is an entrepreneur here in Albuquerque and has a startup. And Aaron Singh is also a very -- is a member of our community, and he's just known for great service. And I'm going to let Devinder Singh thank the Council, but the President and the Member of the Council, we would like to also invite all of you. And I'm going to pass these as when we come around, just a little bit about who the Sikhs are.
Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, President and members of the Council. It's a great privilege to be here and to have this proclamation from the City Council. Excuse me. These are hard times, and somehow, instead of love excelling, the hatred is excelling. So, that is the background of this proclamation, so that the people know who we are. And just a few days back, we wanted to have a meeting with a police commandant, and he has not even heard the name of a Sikh, that what a Sikh is. So, this is just an attempt to familiarize as many people with who we are. And our fundamental three principles of the faith are honest living, honest living and meditating on the name of one God, and sharing and caring. These are the three founding principles of our guru, Guru Nanak, who was the first guru from 15th century. Vaisakhi is a movement of, in 1699, when the Sikhs were given the order of Kalsa. And this is the time when the resistance against the tyranny, injustice, and the human rights started in an armed way. So, the people were awakened to take the arms to fight against injustice. And when the peaceful -- and our guru declared, "When the peaceful means fail to deliver, then it is right, it is justified, to take up the arms." So, this is how this day, the Kalsa faith, started. And this is the day of, you can say, the beginning of the dismantling of the Mughal Dynasty from India.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Come on up and get your proclamations.
We'd like to shake your hands.[907.01][907.01](Applause.)
Thank you. Counselors.
Sir Vice President.
Yes, sir.
One person that they did not introduce was Harjeen this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselors. Our next presentation is from Co-Chairs Pat Nye and Don Dowportal regarding Money Smart Week. Come on up.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you, members of the Council. We're happy to be able to take a few minutes to let you know that we are promoting Money Smart Week. It was originated by the Federal Reserve Bank of Chicago in 2002 as a public awareness campaign to help consumers better manage their personal finances. We know that financial education fosters financial stability for individuals, families, and entire communities. So, this is the second year that we're supporting an Albuquerque Money Smart Week. We have banks, nonprofits, and government agencies that are participating in our coalition meetings to promote and offer the sessions. Last year, during our Money Smart Initiative, we held 88 sessions and reached over 2,000 students and adults throughout the Albuquerque and Santa Fe community. This year, we're splitting off, so we hope to have just as a successful campaign this year. And so, I'll let Don tell you about the kickoff event that we have planned.
We have a kickoff event. The event will be held at the West Enterprise Business Center at 609 Broadway. It is on April 21st at 9:00. We have invited the Attorney General Hector Baldera to make some comments. The Attorney General's office is also going to have a number of public and consumer sessions planned throughout the entire month. There will be four sessions held at the West location throughout the day. There's a class for older adults, there's a class for adults, there's a class for youth, and there's also a class for small business.
And so, thank you for the opportunity. We have many programs available, both through our own institutions or through FDIC, to teach Money Smart. And we encourage you to spread the word and look for an announcement about our kickoff event. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down and giving us a presentation. Our next presentation is from Gerald Romero, Budget Office, and this is regarding the latest GRT report. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Yes, sir.
One person that they did not introduce was Harjeen this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselors. Our next presentation is from Gerald Romero, Budget Office, and this is regarding the latest GRT report. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Yes, sir.
One person that they did not introduce was Harjeen this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down and giving us a presentation. Our next presentation is from Gerald Romero, Budget Office, and this is regarding the latest GRT report. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President and members of the Council. The city received a GRT distribution on March 16th, 2017. This would be January activity accrued for February, so we've got four months left in this fiscal year. The year-over-year was actually negative, negative 1.3, which brings our cumulative growth to 1.8. And our target at this point, our reset target for the fiscal year '17 that we're in, is a growth rate of 2.3% in gross receipts tax. And I've got Mr. Blair with me here today, the City Economist, to answer any specific questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the Council? Counselor Sanchez, and then Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. With these numbers and looking into the future, it looks like things have not really improved where we thought they would be at. We're still running low on revenues. Our projections, I mean, the projected revenues started out at 2.8, you said, or 2.9, and now they're down to 2.3. What are we going to do in the future if we don't see any drastic changes in the revenues increased, increasing, when we've got so many issues that we are confronting within the city, especially when we are looking at the Albuquerque Police Department, when we need to get these numbers up?
Mr. Vice President and Counselor Sanchez, it is becoming increasingly difficult. I mean, the budget we sent down to you on Friday is balanced, it's structurally balanced, it assumes growth in gross receipts tax at 3% next year, but not for the Hold Harmless Phase-Out and other state reductions and deductions, it would probably be more like 4%, 4.1%, which is, you know, exceeding population growth and inflation, I believe. But you're correct, it is becoming increasingly difficult to balance the needs of this community with the growth in revenue that we're seeing. I believe that's going to be up to the Council to decide, do you cut programs, do you cut services at some point, or do you raise fees and raise taxes?
Counselor Harris.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Richardson, or Romero, rather. But in any case, I'm looking at this graph from the state, and it's just incredibly hard for me to trust the numbers. I mean, it looks like there must be some, I mean, just call it what it is, incompetence by the Taxation and Revenue Department. I mean, they, how can they be? The numbers cannot possibly be that year-over-year. Their swings are wild. It looks like they're getting less wild, but I just wonder what their next correction's going to be. So, I mean, is there any rhyme or reason as to why the state is doing what it's doing with its reports? And is there any way that we can somehow get it corrected so we can plan?
Mr. Vice President and Counselor Harris, we did see, you know, very huge swings in October and November's distribution, which were not normal, at least since I've been in the Budget Office. I believe Mr. Blair can think back to a time when it took a swing similar a decade or so ago. But as I explained to you, in those two months, there was a software upgrade or implementation, I believe it was an upgrade, the state tax and rev made that did cause that particular huge swing you're seeing in October, and then corrected in November's distribution. The ups and downs that are sort of closer in the, I'll say, 4%, 5%, 6% range, we've sort of gotten used to with different deductions and reductions, like I've talked to you about before. Maybe, you know, more vendors, more businesses taking advantage of that, adjustments, prior year adjustments being corrected. We've gotten used to that, and that's why we try to look at quarterly or longer-term trends in this distribution. It does make up a huge portion of our general fund budget at about 63%, 64% of total revenues.
Thank you. Any other questions from Mr. Romero? Go ahead, Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So, Mr. Romero, during this last legislative session in Santa Fe, there was discussion about the internet tax and Amazon. And it looks like that might happen, I think. Would you agree? Does that look like we might be doing? And if it does, would that give any GRT going towards municipalities?
Mr. Vice President and Counselor Gibson, yes, and we're hopeful that that does happen. What's included in the budget we've sent down to you is an assumption that Amazon begins paying taxes to the state for internet sales outside of, or inside of New Mexico, they exist outside of New Mexico. Our belief at this point is that the state will treat it as the compensating tax, which municipalities get a much smaller percentage of than if they were to treat it like a gross receipts tax, with the jurisdictions getting their respective share of the way they get in this report I'm presenting to you today. Our understanding is state statute currently does not allow for that, but we've reached out to Tax and Rev, and we hope to have conversations with them here in the next week or two about how we might make that happen. Because I think, as you read and understood from maybe newspaper articles, Amazon fully intended or intends to be able to give those municipalities and local jurisdictions their fair share.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counselors? Mr. Romero, thank you very much. Our final presentation for this evening is from Chief Eden and Selena Espinosa regarding APD reforms. Welcome.
Hello, how are you?
So, my name is Selena Espinosa. I am the Communication and Community Outreach Director for the Albuquerque Police Department. We recently did this last month, citywide briefings at each of the community policing councils, so I'm going to give you a condensed version, a very condensed version of that presentation. We started with, so this centers around Albuquerque Police's Fifth Agency Report. This report was compiled, not compiled, but published a little bit differently. This report in its entirety is only 15 pages, to make it much more comprehensible, easier to read, and just more tangible for the public. We think that the public will get much more out of it if it's only 15 pages as opposed to 300. So, we're just hoping that people read it and access it more easily. Where are we today? We've currently met all deadlines for policy and training. We're in the operational phase. We know that this goes policy done first, training done second, and the third phase of this is, is it working? So, right now, APD would say we are in the is-it-working phase. We have updated our accountability when it comes to officers' application of force. We revamped the Use of Force Policy Suite, which underwent its six-month review. All of the policies pertaining to the Kalsa must be reviewed every six months on the first implementation per the Kalsa, and then annually after that. So, we're doing our six-month reviews now. We updated some new technologies to be able to help look at supervision and track supervision more clearly. One of those things is Blue Team, and we've gone over that just a little bit. And then implemented further job aids to help supervisors know what's expected out of them across the board, and make sure that everything that is expected of them is accounted for and able to be tracked. Our Use of Force Review Board is now currently reviewing all serious uses of force, and then every so often, they're checking random use of force investigations as well, just to check for compliance and make sure that the accuracy is there. Now, the Use of Force Review Board, I'm sure you know, is comprised of the Director of the Civilian Police Oversight Agency, the Major of the Training Academy, and then the Subject Matter Experts. So, if it's a canine bite, which is a serious use of force, it would be the K-9 team that would help review that case. Cases are also reviewed independently by the Civilian Police Oversight Agency, which you guys are well aware. We underwent some additional training, which included supervisor training for not only supervisors that are sworn, but our civilian managers as well. And it was a Six Sigma type of training to help develop leadership skills and cultivate further data development and looking for efficiencies and deficiencies when it comes to our processes within APD. Officers also underwent training for conduct and complaint take forms, and those investigations, which are subsequently handed over to the Civilian Police Oversight Agency. And we updated our field training officer program. We underwent some cultural sensitivity training, which was the first of its kind for APD, where we took multiple ethnicities and made a panel for the cadets, and it will be rolled out for the officers as well. And they give their perspectives on the history of policing for each of those cultures, and then different types of body languages or communication styles that might be associated with those different cultures, so that we're able to better communicate and work with different cultures that are within our city. And we're looking to diversify that training to include the transgender community, and maybe even the hard-of-hearing, and maybe some of our religious sections within our community. We really focused on mental health during this reporting period, which is from August of '16 to January. And you know about most of these implementations, so I'm not going to go over them. I think a big one for APD is we have the goal of, per the Kalsa, having our field service officers enhanced crisis intervention trained. So, not only will be the first department of its size to have all of our field officers crisis intervention trained, but 40% of our staff is our goal, to have them enhanced crisis intervention trained, so that they would be the first responders and be able to help more quickly. crisis intervention trained, but 40% of our staff is our goal, to have them enhanced crisis intervention trained, so that they would be the first responders and be able to help more quickly those dealing with crisis in our community. We looked at the Mental Health Advisory Committee and just how they're operating and how we can better support them. The Mental Health Advisory Committee, as I'm sure you know, the Civilian Police Oversight Agency looks at uses of force, MRAC looks at all calls dealing with individuals in some type of mental health crisis or crisis in general. They look at the response, how the call was handled, and the outcome of that call. I think you'll really appreciate this one. This graph looks at the number of crisis intervention-type calls that we received from October through January, and of those, we had 2,064 calls within the field that were related to some form of crisis or person who is dealing with some mental health issue in our community. The major section of that, this red section, were people that we were able to take to the hospital, or what we would call jail diversion, so that's 77% of those calls. 189 of those calls resulted in no transportation, so we were able to resolve that call on scene, work with a family member, work with the individual, get them whatever help they might need. This section of the pie is related to suicide calls. That doesn't mean that that section committed suicide, it's just we classify those calls differently. The next section is calls that are in progress, so they're either currently working with our COAST teams or our CIU unit, which means that they're getting connected with a caseworker and the behavioral health specialists, and the people that can provide them the resources in our community. And then only 1.6% resulted in some sort of arrest or detention. Of those 2,000 calls, only six of them resulted in some use of force, so not even serious use of force, but any level of force at the bare minimum. So, out of 2,000 calls that our officers handled, we only had six uses of force within that piece of pie. Our officers, you know about the Office of Policy Analysis, we've received so far 45 recommendations from community stakeholders or members in the community, and of those 45 recommendations, about half of their recommendations have been implemented and put into policy at APD. We're one of the only departments in the nation where you'll see we want the community to weigh in on actual APD policy. Here's some stats when it comes to staffing, I'm sure you've seen these numbers. We've increased graduation from more than 400% from 2010 to current. So, in 2016, we graduated a total of 93 recruits from the Albuquerque Police Academy. That's the most we've seen in more than a decade. It's a huge number and one that we were very proud of this year. We've implemented our Police and Community Together Teams, which is our PACT teams, and they'll be the proactive community policing in the city, so if you'd like an update, we can give you one of those. And then our Community Policing Councils, their website has been broadened and really highly developed. You can find their recommendations, their meeting minutes, their meeting times, and all of that on their website. We'll continue our community engagement efforts through my office, which is Coffee with a Cop. We've implemented a new 10 code, so that officers can call out that 10 code. They call a 751 when they're at a community meeting, which will allow us to track some of the data, looking at, were they attending more schools in this area command, were they attending more coffee with a cop in that area command, what kind of community outreach are our officers doing? And then just some good did you knows that we covered during this report. Officer-involved shootings have decreased 53% from 2010, so 2010, we had 13, 11, we had 7, 12, we had 6, 13, we had 8, 14, we had 7, 2015, we had 5, and 2016, we had 6. So, that's looking at those numbers and the new training and kind of policies that have been put into place. Overall firearms discharges, that's any time an officer discharges their weapons, whether that's accidentally or at a target. Those firearms discharges have decreased 72% from 2010, and you can see the data there. And then you're all well aware of the new crime, property crime specialists that we're implementing. So, we're really trying to make APD's career path, at your help, be more of a stepping stone, so that you can start at that PSA level, walk your way up, and then hopefully that additionally helps with recruiting. The next monitoring period will, our report will be released May 2nd, so that will be made public then. That was a condensed version. Sorry, I spoke quickly.
Thank you, Ms. Espinosa. Any questions for Chief Eden or Ms. Espinosa? Yes, Counselor Sanchez.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I am very pleased to see, especially with the crisis intervention training, that 100% of the officers that are on the field are now trained in crisis intervention training, because I think that was an important component. And prior to the DOJ coming in, I think we were at 28%, so I think we've made some real strides in that area. And you said the next report by the monitor will be out when?
May 2nd.
May 2nd? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, counselors? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Counselor, we're going to go to Economic Development Discussion. We have a presentation from Bedeja Firth and Brian Riley regarding the Central Quarter, Good to Gray, what we're learning so far from our Community Workshop Week. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President and members of the council. Over the last eight months or so, we've been conducting research and analysis enabled by the Federal Transit Oriented Development Planning Grant. Those studies and investigations have revealed Albuquerque's biggest opportunity within city government's control for attracting new investment, reducing the cost of living, and generating new tax revenue. The 12,000-acre Central Corridor can generate $2 billion worth of real estate reinvestment, a billion worth of cost savings to households, create 9,000 jobs, and reduce poverty by 25% in 10 years through coordinated transit and land use planning, and the alignment of policies, practices, and funding. This involves leveraging a built-out art project with zoning regulations that enable more reinvestment and focused growth around transit stops. This will help make each station area more of a destination that is a place where people want to return to, and places that more people live in by providing more diverse mixed-income housing options. What I'd like to present for you today is a very quick snapshot of some of what we've been learning from these research and design ideas so far, which culminated in a week-long workshop from March 7th to 13th, which was led by a team of urban designers, analysts, architects, planners, and brought in neighborhoods and associations, organizations, and local businesses. These ideas often build on already identified priorities and top community-identified concerns such as the need for job centers on the West Side, the Robert Gibbs analysis of retail in Nob Hill, and pedestrian safety measures in a number of intersections as examples. What we're learning: Bring Back the Missing Middle. Historically, in our traditional neighborhoods, this city offered all kinds of people, whether they were homeowners or renters, a range of housing choices, including single-family homes, but also duplexes, triplexes, quads, bungalow, courtyard apartments, and town homes. Through these historic building types exist in every one of our core neighborhoods, and often some of the most beautiful neighborhoods. Since the 1960s, zoning codes across America have made many of these kinds of developments illegal. Every one of these buildings were built locally and financed locally. We're learning from this that we can do this again. It's part of a movement pioneered by former Albuquerque resident John Anderson called incremental development. And here's a picture of a missing middle type of development, that you can see whether it's the triplexes and the town homes, the courtyard apartments, different kinds of developments, so that density means different things in different parts of our community, and doesn't all have to be one-size-fits-all. We've gone on to another part called Replacing the Missing Teeth. One of the limiting factors to generating more value in the Central Corridor is the large number of parking lots right on the street where there used to be buildings. Surface parking lots on street frontage have become allowed by zoning regulation, often parking is even required. What we're learning is, if you plan cities for cars and traffic, you get cars and traffic. If you plan for people in places, you can get people in places. So, we're looking to visualize density to help enable discussions and decisions. When we go out into the communities, we find that a lot of people have a hard time visualizing, what does different types of density mean? You know, what would it mean for my neighborhood? The Workshop Week generated visualizations of what several nodes in the corridor could look like in 10 years, and it brought us a new cutting-edge tool called ZONAR, which we have loaded our draft IDO regulations and generated images of what different kinds of resulting businesses could look like, in order for the public to be able to visualize what these types of regulations might bring. What we're learning is, pictures and visualizations can enable much more satisfying and specific place-based conversations with residents and businesses about what the new regulations might allow, what different kinds of density can look like, and these can help to more satisfying decisions. We're going to continue these conversations enabled by these images across the corridor. Another point: Full employment in the corridor via 9,000 jobs plus access to $250,000, $250,000 more. What's possible in the Central Corridor for job creation is bigger than intel. It breaks down into 6,000 office and institutional jobs and 3,000 retail and restaurant jobs. What we're learning is, Central Corridor jobs are almost exclusively local jobs. Anchor institutions are now organizing to hire local people. Our department's contract with Talent ABQ is positioned to assess corridor residents and build up a whole plan for corridor residents to have jobs created by the new opportunities within that. We'll be piloting a neighborhood-based job fair this spring. Beyond the jobs in the corridor itself, with an improved transit system, residents of the corridor will have access to one quarter of the entire metro area's jobs via a 30-minute commute or less. Onto infrastructure, more things that we've been learning. Treat stormwater as a resource and not just a waste product. We've learned downtown, we've known for well, thank you, downtown has flooding problems from upstream contract concrete and impervious services. We're developing a number of potential scenarios. What we're learning is possible solutions which involve stormwater harvesting that can improve the ecology as well as enable new development near stations rather than only one or the other. We're looking at solutions at a district level for both parking and energy. What we're learning is viable parking and even energy solutions are even more possible when increasing the scale beyond the individual property to district-wide approaches. We're going to harness the market to preserve historic buildings. What we're learning here is, we have historic assets in Albuquerque that can be better leveraged, and that can be made economically more viable and sustainable through a variety of market-savvy means that we'll be exploring. We're looking at reducing poverty through increasing income and reducing the cost of living. We've talked about job linkage strategies that can increase income. What we're learning is that reducing the cost of living for households is also a way to increase their effective earnings, and that after housing, transportation is a household's largest annual expense. Adding affordable and workforce housing and mixed income to transit-served areas doubles their affordability. Downtown and central neighborhoods generate some of the most value in the entire state. Value per acre is a measure of the tax-generating productivity of a particular building. Here's a summary about the analyses we've learned, and that what we're learning is that some of the most productive buildings are in downtown and traditional neighborhoods such as Old Town, and that making more such value is largely within the city's control through zoning. Looking at using public assets to add value. We looked at publicly-controlled spaces, especially parking lots along Central Avenue Frontage, as a potential for new and different uses that could generate revenue and add value to the properties across the street and nearby. We've heard a lot from community members about a desire for more community gathering spaces, and suggested incorporating public plazas into either public or private developments. What we're learning is, there are opportunities on publicly-controlled land to catalyze other adjacent development. We're beginning to explore these at the individual station area level with place-based development advocates such as our Main Street programs. Going to be capturing value created to catalyze more. The 12,000-acre corridor could generate huge amounts of new reinvestment into our communities. What we're learning is, there are a series of potential public investments, such as repurposing some obsolete buildings downtown, site preparation in scattered development sites, or district parking solutions that could generate even more value. We're exploring those further. What's next? The team of analysts and urban designers are compiling their report in about six weeks. The website we encourage everyone to look at is greatercentralab.com. It's the place to see where all that work is unfolding. Staff is taking elements from the website and the workshop, starting places for dozens of conversations. That's the most important thing to remember, that this week marked the beginning of dozens of community conversations, which will continue through several next months. Community members, businesses, associations, and organizations themselves are organizing topic-specific action forums on issues of most interest and importance to them. Your offices may be asked to list yourselves as co-conveners, we welcome your participation, and it means that you'll attend and invite people who you think would be interested. All the discussions have notes taken and are posted online, so anyone interested can get engaged. As you can see, there's been a lot going on. We appreciate the support that we've received from the council, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I want to thank you for your work and the vision that we are looking at for the Central Avenue Corridor, and some of the things that we will possibly see in the future. My concern right now is the presence and the issue regarding the funding and the loan money that was to be available for the business merchants along the art project. Where is that at now? Because they were told, the businesses, that that money would be available sometime in March. Here we are now in April, and I know some of these businesses are really struggling to stay afloat, especially with the construction work going on. Is that money going to be available soon for these businesses?
Mr. Vice President and Counselor Sanchez, yes, I am happy to report that within the next 10 days, we should see our first applications from our businesses to be able to support those and get the loan program out on the street.
And how much money do we have in that pool now for the loans? Because the last count, we were at $200,000. Hopefully, that number has increased.
Mr. Vice President and Counselor Sanchez, yes, we are seeing, working on a development agreement that could triple the amount of money that we see in the fund now.
Okay, initially, we were told 2 million, so now we're looking at 600,000?
Our goal is to get over $1 million, and what we've been able to put together so far is in excess of 600,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Lewis.
Mr. Vice President, indeed, I understand that you are recognized today as a woman of influence in New Mexico and by Albuquerque Business First, and so, want to congratulate you for that, and thank you for all that you do for economic development in our city. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Counselors, we're going to administration question and answer. Counselors, any questions for the administration? Go ahead, Counselor Davis.
Very quickly, Chief Rain, if you can help me, I'm sorry, Chief Downey, I'm sorry. Can you join me real quickly? Flashback. Yeah, sorry. I just wondered if you could give us an update on the Down and Out program on Central. I know we had talked about it earlier, and you were waiting on some equipment and vehicles for the Down and Out protocol to get started. I know we said April 1st was the start date on that, but I hear from some of our firefighters in the field that that program hasn't started yet. I wonder if you can give us an update on the progress there?
Sure, Mr. Vice President and Counselor Davis. No, that program hasn't started. We've been waiting for the funding was for the last quarter of the fiscal year, the $100,000 in the resolution was to spend on overtime. thousand dollars in the resolution was to spend on overtime. To be quite frank with you, to absorb the operating costs associated with that program in the last quarter of this fiscal year, it's going to be very difficult for us to start the program at all, and there's no forecast for funding for it in FY18. So, we haven't started it, and it's going to be very difficult for us to do that given the condition we're in financially right now.
Mr. President and Chief, thanks for that, but when we did the analysis originally, I know there was enough programmed in based on an analysis from the Fire Department that that's what you needed to do the job, and I know your department went ahead and purchased some new equipment in order to do this, I understand, right, which was not part of the original plan, but so what happens with the new equipment?
The big purchase would have been for the apparatus, the two SUVs, and we have not purchased those vehicles yet. So, the equipment that we would have purchased would have been for EMS supplies that we'll just use through the attrition of providing EMS services regularly anyway. So, there hasn't been a substantial investment in equipment that we'd have to explain.
Okay, so we need to follow up with that sort of offline and work through with the administration on figuring out a way to, what we do about the money that's been appropriated there, it's been set aside for this program and being sure we can figure that out, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Yes, Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, but not for fire, but thank you, Chief. Actually, my question is for APD, someone who might be able to speak on the lab, crime lab?
Mr. President, Counselor, Commander Jeff McDonald can address some of these questions.
Yeah. So, thank you, Commander, thank you for being here. Question I have is regarding recent activity in the lab. Can you kind of give us an idea of, oh, how many kits have come in, not, and I don't mean necessarily just the sexual assault evidence kits, but samples that have come in like in the past month, maybe, or you pick the period of time, and of that, how many, and then how many have been tested and have you gotten results out on?
If we could just perhaps clarify, you're talking about fluids that might have DNA trace evidence specifically, I think?
Yeah, anything that was sent to the lab for testing.
Mr. Vice President, Counselor Gibson, we average around eighteen sexual assault kits a month that come into the lab. The other types of biological evidence that comes in depends on how many crimes that we're out investigating, so it's hard to say how many items that is. On a homicide, you could get fifty, you could get a hundred and fifty. On an auto burglar, you might get one or two samples. So, it's hard to really quantify that amount.
Well, then, just looking at the sexual assault evidence kits, on an average, you say about eighteen a month come in, how many kits have been processed in the past month?
Mr. Vice President, Counselor Gibson, right now, we are keeping up with the court order, the CMO, and all the cases that are going to court are the cases we're working on. So, we're barely keeping up with the cases that are having to go to court.
And how many would that be, just on an average?
I know we have four that have a deadline that have to be done this month. The scientific evidence deadline is this month. I believe three of those four are already complete and one is almost complete.
So, about four complete tests get out about a month? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
With the two analysts that I have, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. The other question I have for you is, I understand you are one of the folks who is working on the Saki grant. Can you just tell me how that's going? Who else is involved and how that's going?
Mr. Vice President, Counselor Gibson, we completed our application for the grant. It was due March 3rd, I believe. It was completed and sent in on time. We are waiting to hear whether we are awarded any money or not, and that won't be until October.
Okay. And who else was involved in preparation of that application?
There were a lot of people that were involved in that. There were people from the same unit, myself, my interim lab director, people from planning, and we had it reviewed as well by outside sources.
Who are those outside sources?
We sent them to the state's grant clearinghouse.
Oh, okay.
So, that they could review it. They had a successful Saki grant the year before, prior to us, so in 2015, or excuse me, 2016, so we let them review ours as well.
Okay, good. So, did they have any problems with the application or did they just say, "Go ahead and send it"?
Well, they had some suggestions that we implemented some of them into our application.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, just as additional information on that, we also have an RFP out on the streets that is basically soliciting pricing, unit pricing, to do some of those kits, those same kits. It's an issue that's encountered in a lot of different jurisdictions in the United States with as a backlog, and they have to go outside their own labs' capacity, and these outside labs, there's probably about three or four of them in the entire United States that are high-capacity labs that do this kind of work, and we want to see what they can give us for a pricing on testing those kits. And so, we have a plan that Commander McDonald has put together. We have put into our FY18 budget recommendation a million dollars. The state of New Mexico has provided an additional five hundred thousand dollars for kits, just to purchase the kits, not to do the testing of the kits, and so we have some resources that, significant resources. If you were to look at how much it would cost us if we would just to send out each and every kit, assuming that one of these high-capacity labs could do that many kits over a period of year, you're probably talking about three, three and a half million dollars for the four thousand cases that we have on backlog. So, the good news is, is that when you talk about three million, and we put a million and a half already into it between our money and the state's money, we have a plan and a pretty significant down payment on addressing this. I'd also add that Project 333 was put forth, and we have detectives that are doing some screening on a lot of the cases, too.
Right.
So, because you want to triage these cases, some of the cases, and you're very familiar with it. I know your expertise has a good grip on the understanding, so what we're trying to do is, we're trying to basically screen those cases to ensure that the cases we do send out have a prosecutorial solvability component to them.
Right, right, right. So, in, one of the things that I do have a little bit of concern about, maybe we can talk about this on another date, is the, in contracting out for some of those, the expectation is also that they will appear in court, and I'm not really sure how reliable that is, but let's just talk about that later on. I really would like to get like a, and maybe we can figure out how to do this, get a periodic update from the lab, finding out how much work has been taken in, how much has been processed, how much has been delivered to whomever, you know, courts or whatever, court appearances, things like that.
And Counselor, I think this will be, during the budget, we'll go over this in greater detail. Thank you. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you. This question is for Mr. Perry or Mr. Reardon. I know that the public has lost a lot of confidence and don't feel that we will be getting the money from the federal government, the fifty million, the additional nineteen million. Has Congress set a date when they are going to be voting on the fifty million dollar appropriation for the yard project?
Mr. President, Counselor Sanchez, FTA was in our office last week touting the virtues of our project and how happy they are with it, and again reinforcing their commitment to fund the project. They think that the next opportunity that council will uptake is sometime this month, so by the end of April, they'll have either an omnibus bill or a final resolution for the FY17 budget. They, there's still a potential that they'll do a continuing resolution which would keep us in hiatus until sometime in the summer, but so this April, the next, is the next time, next opportunity that we would have to hear of a bill that actually finishes off the president's budget.
But it will not be the council, it will be the United States Congress, correct?
The United States Congress, sorry, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sanchez. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, and Mr. Reardon, we chatted offline also, and you mentioned that, I mean, we have FTA money that we can use to finish the project, is that correct? But we just need reimbursement for that from Congress. I mean, tell us how that works, because there's some concern out there that if we don't have the funds appropriated by Congress this month, then everything's going to stop. I mean, where are we with that?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, thanks for the question. So, within our whole funding package of the project, there's other FTA money involved in there. We cannot draw those down until the state, the small starts grant application is either, or the grant is either approved or not, but if it's not approved, a worst-case scenario, never happened in the history of the country, happens, the rest of those grant monies would then still be available to the project, and the FTA has promised us that they would go for other funding sources of FTA money, it would just not be small starts grant money. So, there, even in the point zero 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 one percent chance that this would happen, the opportunity for other federal monies is, in essence, Plan B.
Counselor Harris.
And just to be clear, because I think you answered the question of the broader funding, but what about short-term? Is there any possibility that, because some people are saying that, well, what's going to happen? We could, if the Congress doesn't act in April, then everything stops and Central's torn up for four months while we figure all this out with Congress. Is that likely to happen or could that happen?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, no, we have enough existing money to be able to complete the project. The project will not have to stop and then start again at any time. There's enough existing resources that we could complete the project, and then we're in the reimbursement business, not in the needing money business. So, we will, the project will be complete this calendar year.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Then we're going to move on to the Journal, and I move approval of the March 20th Journal. Have a motion, a second, any discussion or comments? All in favor, signify by saying yes. All opposed, that passes unanimously, that moves us to Communications Introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? We'll start with Counselor Pena.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling R-175 out of the Finance and Government Operations Committee and placing it on tonight's agenda for final action.
And R-175 is naming the Alamosa Center after Ted and Gallegos Center. So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying yes. All opposed, that passes unanimously. Moves to myself for Counselor Benton. Move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling R-162 out of the Finance Government Operations Committee and placing it on tonight's agenda for final action. R-162 is approving and authorizing the acceptance of a grant from Burnley County for the Sawmill Community Land Trust Mill Pond Refuge Project and providing appropriation to the Planning Department. Have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor, signify by saying yes. All opposed, that passes unanimously. I move approval for the letter of introduction. Have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying yes. All opposed, that passes unanimously. That moves us to reports of committees. Counselor Davis, Finance, Government, and Operations.
Thank you, Mr. President. I get the hint that we're trying to be fast here. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, March 27th and reports out the following items. In the matters of O-28 and R-167 that they do pass as amended. In the matter of ECs 274, 286, and 305 that they be approved. In the matter of ECs 260, 285, 288, 289, 290, 295, 296, and 302 that receipt be noted. And in the matter of ECs 287, 297, 299, and 304 that they be approved and acted on at the meeting at which they are reported, which is this one, and in the matter of R-162, 170, 172, 175, 178, 179 that they do pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor, signify by saying yes. All opposed, that passes unanimously. Counselor Jones, let's.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Land Use, Planning, and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, March 29th, 2017, and reports out the following items. In the matter of O-34 that it do pass as substituted. In the matter of O-39 and O-40 that they do pass. In the matter of R-171 that it be without recommendation. I make a motion to accept the committee report.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. You have a motion and a second to accept the committee report. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor, signify by saying yes. All opposed, that passes unanimously, and that moves us to withdrawals and deferrals. Counselors, any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Counselor, well, Brad for Benton. The mayor's recommendation of Smith Engineering Company for Marlboro Arnold Storm Drainage Designing moved deferral until April 17th. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, signify by saying yes. All opposed, that passes unanimously, and that was from approvals, any others on approvals? Counselor Gibson? Okay, then we're moving to final action.
Mr. Vice President, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a deferral.
Okay, go ahead.
Item R-173, naming the existing stage at the building, and the buildings at Civic Plaza as Al Hurricane Senior Pavilion at Civic Plaza, I move deferral until May 1st.
Great, we have a motion and a second for deferral until June, is it June 5th or?
It's actually May 1st.
May 1st, we're going to, that's going to be May 1st. Any discussion or comments? And we have a motion and a second? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying yes. All opposed, that passes unanimously.
Mr. Vice President.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Davis. Gibson.
I had a deferral. That is R-168, adjusting Department of Family and Community Services fiscal year 2017, City Housing Fund Appropriations to provide for the acquisition of property to be used for an affordable housing, transitional housing, and behavioral health services project in collaboration with Burnley County. I'll move deferral until April 17th.
Thank you, Counselor. We have a motion and a second for deferral on R-168 till April 17th. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed. Okay, let me get this one for Counselor Benton, and this is R-156, amending resolution R-15253 which created a collaborative process for behavioral health reform, beginning with the city of Albuquerque and Burnley County through the Albuquerque-Burnley County Government Commission, moved deferral until April 17th. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor, signify by saying yes. All opposed, that passes unanimously. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This was not on the agenda. This is R-182, and that is adding the name of Ruby Tafoya to the Louis Tafoya Community Room at Shamna Quethie. I move deferral until April 17th.
Okay, we have motion, what number is that?
One eighty-five.
Okay, one eighty-two, okay, we have motion and a second. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying yes. All opposed, that passes unanimously. Let me get, so that brings us now to, are there any changes to the consent agenda? Back to the consent agenda now. Any changes to consent agenda? Okay, I move approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments on the consent agenda? All in favor, signify by saying yes. All opposed, that passes unanimously. Thank you, counselors. That brings us to general public comments, and there will be a two-minute time limit. The light on the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, then a bell will ring and the light will turn yellow indicating you have thirty seconds. So, please wrap your time up before two minutes because I will stop you at two minutes. So, we have, our first person is Kristi Hoad, followed by Simon Polakowski, and then Mr. Larry Renasek. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. And my name is Chris Howd. I'm the president of the Citizens Information Committee of Martinez Town, the duly-recognized neighborhood association of South Martinez Town. There's an issue that we'd like to bring to your attention. The Albuquerque Housing Authority is responsible for renovation and rehabilitation of the existing public housing stock and grounds throughout our city. Albuquerque Housing Authority is part of the federal HUD program, and federal dollars for public housing support are essential and very likely at risk in the current federal administration. A significant number of well-designed public housing units are located in our small neighborhood immediately to the east of the city, the gateway, and they date to the 1970s. Public housing shelters the most fragile people in our city. Maintenance of units and grounds is essential. New roofs aren't sexy. Irrigation repairs aren't sexy either. The integrity and quality of public housing affects the integrity and quality of the surrounding community in all districts. If we don't maintain a desirable residential area, we risk losing our neighborhood character in every district, particularly our small neighborhood. We need help and support from our local government to renovate and rehab the existing public housing stock and the grounds. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, and thanks for coming down. Mr. Simon Polakowski, followed by Mr. Larry Renasek, and then Mark Mars. Hello, sir, welcome.
Thank you, Vice President Counsel. I've been coming to these council meetings for approximately four years now. I never wanted to come down here. I used to be on public access when we had live I used to be on public access when we had live programming. Uh, and a few weeks ago, somebody who had never been to council, had come to council and said, you know, I observed every counselor down here, and he said, I noticed this one counselor on the left, and he could care less about what anybody came up and said here. And I said, oh, that's Counselor Harris, and I remember him from the very first time I came down here, when there was a discussion about public access. His comment was, we don't want any controversy. I've come to the conclusion controversy means criticism. And I remember also being here when Counselor Harris reminded everyone that when he was president of council, he was the one that instituted, you couldn't come up with banners, you couldn't give your time. So, I've, you know, I gotta admit, one thing, Counselor Harris is consistent. I remember the comprehensive plan. Counselor Harris's, uh, comment, we don't want any more amendments or any more public discussion. Counselor Harris is not a threat to the First Amendment right of free speech. He's an enemy. And being an attorney, someone who is hired to speak for other people, I find this very, very disturbing, to say the least. But I must admit, Counselor Harris is, you know, he's consistent. And I've, one thing I've learned coming down here, there are many people in this community who have a great passion for their neighborhoods, for the city, and two minutes is not enough for them to reach, uh, people and audience with their concerns. Uh, they need a real podium in order to really get their, uh, voice across. And I gotta admit, in the end, everyone's frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Larry Renasek, followed by Mark Mars, followed by Don Schrader. Mr. Renasek is not here. Okay, Mark Mars, followed by Don Schrader, and then Donald Couchman. Is Mark Mars not here? Mr. Mars? Okay, Mr. Schrader. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Like many people, I can be openly in love with more than one person at the same time. We teach children to share food, toys, friends. How selfish, how cruel the child who demands that his child friend have no other friends or playmates. We adults can learn to share our lovers with others. We enjoy a variety of flowers, fruits, vegetables, books, colors, songs. Many of us enjoy a variety of lovers. A parent can have a deep, special bond with each one of several children. I refuse to let any man cage me or fence me in romantically, so I have no right to cage him or fence him in. Every man I've been in love with has taught me, helping me become a wiser, better lover. I do not own any man, no matter how deeply I love him. I cannot make any man fall in love with me. I cannot make any man stay in love with me, and I'm a fool if I try to force him. I can invest my heart into more than one lover at the same time and do it honestly with all involved. If one lover backs out, moves away, or dies, I may feel less desperate, less abandoned, less devastated, more able to cope in my sad loss. Hell no to lies, cover-ups, cheating, double standards, insane jealousy. Yes to deep intimacy and sexual pleasure shared generously with more than one person.
Thank you. Let me try Mark Mars again. Come on down. And that'll be followed by Donald Couchman and Eric Schultz. I say, welcome.
Hello, the name is Mark Sargent. That's what I'm wrong. Now, that's going to be a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. Okay, I just wanted to draw, uh, council members, thank you for listening. I wanted to draw the public's attention to what may be an extremely egregious example of malfeasance, and just to help illustrate the gravity of the situation, imagine if the federal government gave nineteen point five billion dollars to Hollywood. I think we'd all be pretty upset by this. Well, there is a growing body of evidence that the International Space Station is not in outer space, but it's being filmed in a desalinated pool down here on Earth, and it's being falsely misrepresented. And this started with this phenomenon known as bubbles in space. If you search for it, you'll see many of these so-called spacewalks, which have been falsely misrepresented as live, as has been exposed many times on Facebook when they do their live ISS feeds, bubbles out in space. Well, there's not supposed to be water up there, and it is known that the astronauts do train in these big underwater tanks. And so, this body of evidence, and it's not just bubbles in space, there are harnesses, there are green screens, evidence of flights that are actually on parabolic flights, not in space. And if this is true, it's a big deal, because that's a lot of money that could be used for our own infrastructure, our schools, whatever. So, I'm drawing the attention to it, because I think it's something that deserves to be looked at, uh, because if it's true, these bubbles in space might represent the smoking gun in probably the biggest hoax since, uh, global warming. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thanks for coming down. Mr. Couchman, followed by Eric Schultz, followed by Mike Alvarez. Welcome.
Good evening, Counselors. My name is Donald Couchman, and I am simultaneously the newest and oldest member of the Open Space Advisory Board. We help oversee twenty-nine thousand acres of open space land. One of our areas of responsibility is, under a joint powers agreement, the major portion of the Petroglyph National Monument. This facility has no equal anywhere in the United States. The monument is currently under continued aggressive destructive attack. There are at least forty-nine public access entrances to the area. There are also one hundred thirty-nine miles of trails, mostly unauthorized, consisted of six hundred thirty-six segments. Many of these have been and are being created by ATVs and motorcycles, which are not authorized in this facility. There is no provision in the joint powers agreement for urban recreational use. Disturbed soils can, over time, be mended. Damaged petroglyphs cannot. These iconic figures are not yet, and perhaps never will be, fully understood, even by the descendants of those who created them. What is clear is these rock carvings, which draw thousands of tourists every year, are sacred to many and included in their ceremonial activities. Would you want someone motor biking through your church? How can we respond to this out-of-control problem? There are several ways, including closing inappropriate trails and entrances. The quickest and most effective means is to reestablish a few park rangers. In the recent past, we had several of these who patrolled the monument, and they either stopped or prevented both negligent and deliberate degradation and vandalism. Let's replace them now. Thank you for your time and commitment.
Thank you, Mr. Couchman. And we now have Eric Schultz, followed by Mike Alvarez, followed by Diana Vargas. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Harris, I've always had good luck getting ahold of you and having you respond on a call, so, anyway. Uh, Mr. Lewis, I know that you proposed the thing where we study art, and I talked to the gentleman over here who assures me the city has the money to finish it without it being half-done and unfunded or whatever. So, I was going to say, we, since we don't have federal funds in hand, we need to stop it, but I'll take him for his word that they have the money to get it done. I don't agree with it, I don't like it, but so be it. Um, I, businesses on Central are dying. They're having a horrible time. The car wash at Rio Grande and Central, his business is off fifty thousand a month. The restaurant just up the street from him is way off. The, a lot of the restaurants, you saw it on the news, I hope, the other day, where they had seven, the restaurant said they'd been shut down seven times by crews breaking water pipes and just, and, you know, from, from just below San Mateo all the way through Old Town, it's going to be one lane. You guys are killing Central, and you're dreaming, you're thinking that you're going to get all this money, and all these people are going to move here? I came up Central the other day, and there were three buses, one behind the other. If you're not spacing them out, what's the use of having them? And that's how they run all day long, is in a group. Spread those buses out, and I don't think we need to spend a hundred and forty million dollars that we don't have. There's other things that are more important. The rape kits, getting the police force up to stuff. We're number one, auto theft, number two in burglary, number five in violence in the country. We have the worst schools in the country. Something's got to give.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike Alvarez, followed by Diana Vargas, and then Tad Naminsky. Welcome, sir.
Welcome. I went to a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the people that were doing the meeting estimated that Albuquerque is on a downfall. There's going to be eight hundred to nine hundred people losing their homes. There's going to be a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty. Store owners are going to be closing their doors. And after I, after I heard all that, that's when a lot of store owners have been closing. And there, there's a lot of problems with everything here in Albuquerque, including the art. And here you're talking about the revenue? If you were so worried about revenue, you should have started thinking about it way before you got started with the art. But it's too late now. There's too many store owners that have already closed their stores, and there's more to follow. And as far as the police department's concerned, how many schools for police training has put on their ballot that if you have a bad, uh, credit report, you can't be a cop? These police officers are not going to be carrying a million-dollar bag from one side of town to the other and expect for them to get that money to that one side of town. I was a cop for six years, and I've never known any cop to carry more than maybe twenty bucks in their pocket. And when I went to be a police officer, there was nothing on the paperwork that you have to be a cop with good credit. Something has to give in this Albuquerque Police School. You can't get cops if they have bad credit. How many people have good credit in this town, the way the town's going down? I don't know anybody that's got good credit in this town, the way the situations are going. So, you're going to have to cor- correct a lot of things for the police department.
Thank you. Counsel Harris.
Yes, and this isn't a question, I just want to correct something. You don't necessarily have to have good credit to be a police officer. You can't have any open collections. So, that's different. And that's, that's not a question, sir. And the reason is that you don't want to be subject to temptation if you have power. So, uh, there's different ways to, uh, getting rid of those open collections, um, but that's, that's all. You, you don't have to have perfect payment history.
Thank you.
That's what came out in the news the other day about the police.
Thank you, sir. Dinah Vargas.
Good evening, Vice President and members of City Council. I just wanted to recap from last week, because like the public commenter before said, two minutes is never enough for public comment, and, uh, you know, public access TV would have been a good way to do it, but that got ripped off from us, too. So, that ordinance there, specifically Dan Lewis, who's running for mayor of Albuquerque, signed that in support of art, and recently on his, uh, on the city website, um, he gives a convoluted, um, how he voted for it and why he voted for it, and because it specifically said something about some sort of improving, uh, public bus rapid transit. So, it was like real general, and that's why he voted on it. But if we remember what Reardon said, guy over here to the far right, sitting in front of council, he said that, you know, this has been going on for five years, and it ain't, it ain't your fault the public was too stupid to realize what was happening with public transport. So, one or two things happened, either you lying or the administration lying, but somebody's lying. Because if we knew about it five years ago, how you're, how are you going to put on your website that, oh, you didn't realize it was for the ART? And specifically in one of those general comments that night that it was passed by you since day one, you won't be able to hear it, because like there's no access to anything. But that lady there mentions the ART project right before you voted. So, you knew about the art. So, I guess my question is, instead of you running on like transparency and accountability and all, all these words everyone keeps throwing around, you can't have transparency without responsiveness. Run on responsiveness. You can't have safeguards without oversight. Have oversight. You can't have accountability without consequences. Have consequences.
Thank you.
You're not an executive.
Thank you.
I don't know why you're running for mayor.
Tad Naminsky, followed by Alan Reed, followed by Terry O'Hare. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Tad Naminsky. Well, no wonder why we leave for what Albuquerque becoming, immoral homosexual, homosexual people, probably second to San Francisco when by capital. Well, I am not surprised about that. All this liberal communist socialism, Democrats, and so on. Now, let's go to another issue, International District. What is International District at the dump site? How many stay in or how long stay in, living in International District? It is segregation. It is, it is salamatory. I just have no word to describe. It is dump. I think it can dump, dumping of the section, people walk in here. Well, sanctuary city, that's another subject, too. Well, speaking of sanctuaries, wells, separate harboring illegal alien, separate, we have to separate church from state. Yes. Wow, how interesting. Churches ignited in politics. Landry money building apartments where priority is harming illegal. Law for citizens are pushed up on the list. That's where we at. Now, I have something up as message, we will share what he said on the Judiciary Committee. I will arrest everyone politician.
Thank you. Mr. Alan Reed, followed by Terry O'Hare. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, Counselors. I'm here to, uh, say that the Open Space Advisory Board urges you, uh, to support seventeen one eighty, which appropriates some of our new Open Space Trust Fund earnings to buy the highest priority property that you designated when you recovered the Open Space Program eighteen months ago and set us on a, a new track. And we're proud to say that the Open Space Program is, through the trust fund, earning some of its way, um, in, uh, pursuing the, the priorities that you have set. We are working very closely with Parks and Recreation Director Barbara Taylor, with the Real Property Office that Don Britt runs for us. We've been able to sell some parcels, including one near Farmington, to add to the corpus of the trust fund, and we exchanged property to get the second part that you gave us a few months ago to get the mid Boca Negra Royal property that we needed to add to the Open Space inventory. And, uh, I think we're working very well together. We really appreciate the support that the council has given the Open Space Program, and we look forward to more of the same. Please vote for seventeen one eighty. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Terry O'Hare is our final speaker. Hi, welcome.
Hi and welcome. Thank you. Um, I want to begin a copy of this to the council. Is that funded? Sure.
Hello, Counselor and Counselors. Um, I wanted to speak about, uh, something that most of you may not be avail, uh, aware of, and that is that in our building, uh, when I go to use your ladies' room, there, the, your, your accessible bathroom is not up to ADA compliance. Uh, the wheelchair stall is not big enough. It ought to be twice the size. It ought to be twice the size. And I also want to bring up the fact that the police department across the street does not have a ramp into the building. There's an elevator. So it's not compliant. And police departments are not given an exclusion under ADA to have elevators. They need to have an accessible entrance. The reason I'm bringing up these odd little details is because our city has recently entered into an ADA transition plan with a consultant and we've, it's been awarded, and the kickoff, first kickoff meeting was last week and I went to it. And I found some things out in there that I want to just share with you. And the other thing, back to issues of things you may not be aware of in the city, I have an access audit on Balloon Fiesta Park, sixteen pages, one hundred ADA violations. So we have some issues in the city that are so big that we're not even seeing them, like police department balloon fiesta, okay? And this ADA transition plan is a great, you know, this was a great chance to have somebody kind of tree top these issues, take a look at them, write up reports, do analysis, and then give you all and all of us feedback on what needs to be done and what the budgets are. So at the kickoff meeting, I learned that there is, the consultant, Wilson and Company, is only going to focus on ramps and sidewalks. They're not looking at libraries, they're not looking at balloon fiesta, they're not looking at bathrooms, they're not looking at entry facilities.
Thank you very much. Counselor Davis.
Mr. Herrmann, let me ask briefly, and I appreciate the email that you sent us and this information. Has the city's ADA Advisory Board met to discuss this? And is there an opportunity for you all to perhaps have a meeting and send us sort of your concerns in writing as an advisory board?
Well, I went to the kickoff meeting last Wednesday and our next monthly meeting is tomorrow night, so we haven't had a chance. But I wanted to let you guys know because, you know, you're the one that I suppose authorizes contracts.
It would be really, it would be particularly helpful if you all could send us a, use the, sort of the authority that is invested in the advisory board to give us that information so that we can get staff to take a look at that and compare that to the contract, sort of, we have something in writing. That would be particularly helpful, and I'm sure we can do that through the Finance Committee as well.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor, that concludes public comments, so we're gonna move to announcements. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, April tenth at 5:00 PM in the Council Committee Room on the ninth floor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. There will be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, April twelfth at 5:00 PM in the Council Committee Room on the ninth floor.
Thank you, Counselor. We do not have any public hearings that takes us to final actions. And we move to item A, Counselor Gibson, Committee Substitute O-30. Yes?
Item F first.
Oh, okay, we want to do item F first. I apologize, Counselor. We're gonna go to you right after that. Okay, Counselor Pena, item F.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item F is R seventeen one seventy-five. That's the naming of the Alamosa Center, the Ted M. Gallegos Center. We have members of the family here if they'd like to come up to the podium. I know we're gonna probably go to public comment, but we probably can capture the folks that are here without having to go through each and every one of them. I can go ahead and start by reading the summary. So... Do, oh, you do? Okay. Okay, so then we can just go through the public comment process. This legislation renames the existing Alamosa Center as a Ted M. Gallegos Center in honor of his love for community and long distinguished service to the Alamosa community, the west side of Albuquerque and the city of Albuquerque. As a co-founder and board member of the Alamosa Neighborhood Association, he helped to successfully advocate for the development of the Alamosa multipurpose center. Ted helped raise generation of kids and touched many lives and inspired many people in the Alamosa neighborhood and throughout the southwest Mesa. His leadership and successful implementation of YDI programs and services for children, youth, and families will be remembered for years to come.
Thank you, Counselor Pena. We do have four folks signed up to speak, Jeanette Baca, Jerry Gallegos, Dinah Vargas, Hi, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Alamosa Neighborhood Association. I'm currently the president of the association, and I'm here to just give a short history on the Alamosa neighborhood. Ted Gallegos and I co-founded the association twenty-four years ago in nineteen ninety-three, and a year later, we co-founded the Southwest Alliance of Neighbors, along with a few other neighborhood associations that were near us. A major goal in forming an association and an alliance was to begin advocating for a community center in our southwest Mesa quadrant. Our area was largely underserved and was in dire need of services ranging from medical, dental, public health, social services, childcare, et cetera. At that time, Ted Gallegos was also the director of the YDI drop-in center that was then located in one of the small houses in the city housing project. So besides working on community issues, Ted was pretty much the mother, the father, and the confidant to hundreds of kids in our area. He always attempted to make a change in their lives. In nineteen ninety-five, we often demonstrated the need for a community center by having bonfires on the large empty field where it now stands so that residents could be aware and join us at our efforts to push for it. We arranged immunization clinics on the empty field by contacting the UNM Hospital and getting nurses to give out free immunizations for children, kids, teenagers entering high school in a Winnebago that we would rent. We advocated for years with our then-city councilors, our state legislators, and the mayor's office. Once everyone was on board and money was appropriated, our dream became a reality. Thus, our community center came into fruition in two thousand and one after so many years of pushing for it. This name change for our Alamosa Center to the Ted M. Gallegos Multi-Service Center is very appropriate and significant.
Thank you.
He was hardworking advocate who was loved, appreciated, and respected by everyone. This resolution will forever bring to mind our neighbor, our friend, our coworker, and our brother Ted Gallegos. I urge you to vote yes on this resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pena, for your continued support and hard work for our southwest communities.
Jerry Gallegos followed by Dinah Vargas and Johnny Pena is our final speaker. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, councilors, for hearing us on this issue that we feel is very important to the neighborhood that we reside in, which is the Alamosa Neighborhood Association and also the west side of Albuquerque. Ted and I may have the same last name, we weren't related, but we were the best of friends. And I'm gonna tell you, there is one gentleman that never forgot what it was like to care for people, all the way from having kids that were in diapers, to kids that were in gangs, to senior citizens, kids that were dropping out of school. His intuition as far as being a person of interest with the best interests of the neighborhood at heart has never been met by anybody that I know. I spent a lot of time in the military and I used to work real closely with people, but I never had a guy work as earnestly and as serious as Ted did. And naming this in his honor would be a fantastic thing, not only for our neighborhood, city of Albuquerque. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dinah Vargas followed by Mr. Pena.
Hello, my name is Dinah Vargas, and I'm here in support of the resolution. I hope you all vote yes on it. Ted Gallegos, I grew up for a short amount of time on Sixty-second and Dennison, I believe. And I was in grade school and it was the first time I saw one murdered body and two blood on like a sidewalk, right? So because of men like Ted Gallegos who worked in communities that were underrepresented, underdepressed, or very depressed, I never quite knew what it was to develop something, the word "develop" in itself. So he was part of the youth development. And so because we lack in so much youth development, in renaming the center after Ted Gallegos, perhaps it could create some more momentum, not just in the area that it serves, but in all areas, to develop more of these sorts of centers and resources for people who are underrepresented or aren't represented at all, or who simply just need extra resources in general. Rest in peace, Ted Gallegos. The world was lucky to have you.
Thank you. Johnny Pena is our final speaker. Hello, sir.
Good evening. Hello, Mr. Vice President, members of the council. Thank you very much for having me this evening. I just want to encourage you all to support this resolution. Mr. Gallegos was probably one of the most selfless persons I've ever known, and I knew Mr. Gallegos for probably forty-five years. We grew up in the same neighborhood and it was probably one of the hardest neighborhoods in the city back in the seventies and eighties. Ted was able to help transform that community like Mrs. Baca mentioned. He was able to really transform, and if it wouldn't have been for Ted, that community probably wouldn't be what it is today. And it isn't the best community, but from our standpoint, it is a great community because of Ted. And I urge your support, and I stand for any questions. If not, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counselor Pena, did you move the bill yet?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
So turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'll close, you know, he has members of his family here today, and I know they're shy and didn't want to come up and speak, but, you know, I just wanted to kind of reiterate, I know we're kind of moving through the agenda real quickly, but I just wanted to talk about Ted for a moment. You know, Jeanette was very eloquent in talking about how important, you know, Ted was as a part of a whole group of people that really helped to turn this community around. But Mr. Gallegos, if you know, he was born and raised in the Alamosa neighborhood, and it was actually the city of Albuquerque who came to Chris Baca, who was the former CEO of YDI, and the city of Albuquerque was having so much issue, so many issues in the Alamosa neighborhood that they were really trying to help to transform that area because they had the housing projects and other, and other serious issues. There was a lot of crime and a lot of, actually murders that were happening at that time. The city went to Mr. Baca and asked him to see if he would be willing to take over a, one of the housing projects and turn it into kind of a community center and a place where people can identify resources so that we can help to, so that they could help to transform that community. Mr. Baca took on the challenge from the city of Albuquerque. At the time, I think it was Counselor Pat Baca who actually approached him. And really, with all the issues that they were having, Mr. Baca really didn't know how to address these issues at the time. So what he did is he was, he drove around the neighborhood where he actually now resides, but actually dove around the neighborhood and was looking for somebody in that community who people felt that was well-respected, a member of that community. And everyone pointed to Ted, and I guess he was at the corner of Sixty-second and Dennison, actually where Dinah was talking about. Mr. Baca approached him and said that, you know, I hear that you're well-respected by this community. And, you know, Ted jokes about it, but at the time, he said he thought like Chris was the police or something, you know, coming after him. But actually, Ted decided to take on Mr. Baca's request and actually take on the job to help to transform the community there at the Alamosa, at the housing projects there in Alamosa. And through the years and through the services that were provided there, there was actually so much demand, and at one point, Ted was, there were serving over two hundred kids there on a daily basis. And hence came the demand for really the Neighborhood Association and others to really highlight the need for a community center in that area. And through, as Ms. Baca said, they held bonfires and other, other things to really bring to light the need for that area. So anyway, through the Neighborhood Association and Mr. Baca, I mean Mr. Gallegos's advocacy, it came to fruition where the Alamosa Multi-Service Center is, exists today. And I just, you know, Mr. Gallegos actually was in a tragic accident where he later passed, and I just think that it's fitting that we named the community, the Alamosa Center, the Ted M. Gallegos Center.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, a due pass on R-175. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. There are those unsung heroes that live within our community. Ted Baca was one of those unsung heroes that never asked for any recognition, any credit. He just did his job each and every day to make the west side area, the Alamosa area, a much better place to live. I saw Ted in action many times, and his involvement in the community and his care for this community truly evolved what Alamosa is today. And there's still a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done, as Johnny stated. But there are those individuals that need to be recognized for their hard work and effort over decades of their contributions to our community. And Ted was one of those individuals, and I will be honored to support this resolution here tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Pena to close.
I urge your support.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, R-175, all in favor, signified by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Counselors, we're gonna go to item J. We've been asked to move this one up. This is Counselor Benton, R-184. This is approving a change in the Alvarado Transportation Center Project Master Development Team pursuant to enactment number forty-seven dash nineteen ninety-nine, floor substitute R-190. I move a due pass. Have a motion, a second. We do have an amendment. Is someone passing that out right now? Then I'll move the amendment. Okay, thank you. While you're getting, this is amendment number one on page one, line twenty-three. After Albuquerque, strike the remainder of the lines, strike lines twenty-four and twenty-five, and insert the following. The council hereby approves removing HDIC from the master developer team. This amendment simplifies the language of the bill to make it clear that the only action taken by the council is to approve a change in the master developer team as required by R-99190. We do have a motion and a second for amendment number one. Any discussion or comments? Okay, all in favor of amendment number one, signified by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. That takes us back to the bill, R-184. Any other discussion or comments on the bill? Okay, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And quickly, Mr. Openall, if you can help us on this really quickly. Mr. Openall, this is a piece of the, excuse me, of the city's project to continue supporting businesses along Central, and I know this is, this particular bill deals with a couple of businesses. But can you explain to us really quickly that this is one piece, as I understand it, of several initiatives that'll be rolling out this week to support our businesses in the loan fund and others? Is that correct?
Mr. Vice President, Counselor Davis, yes, absolutely it is. We're establishing an overall system of tailored financial assistance, of which the Central Loan Fund is part of that, and there's a system by which we're putting that together, some of which can go to MR funds and some of which are going to non-MR sections of Central. We have, this bill tonight deals with MR funds that will go back to MR districts and areas. We have a separate fund, currently one hundred thousand dollars, and other pledges from other private sector individuals and companies that will go together to service the non-MR parts. In total, we, our goal is still a million dollars, always has been a million dollars. The other, the two million earlier that Counselor Sanchez was referring to is for overall supports for central businesses, which we can go to at another time. But this fund, a million dollars, should service all of the, all the businesses along Central. This bill tonight is part of that one million dollars.
And so, Mr. President, and Mr. Openall, just to clarify, so, and I, I know you've been working a lot with our businesses on this. Ms. Roanhorst and her team have been really working as well, and we've heard from some of the businesses that have made applications and are ready to move forward to sort of step up and show sort of the ART impact and ask for some assistance. So is it fair to say, if we pass this component tonight, it will trigger some of the other pieces that have been sort of on hold, and hopefully everybody will be able to be assisted by that, even if their business isn't specifically in this area?
Mr. Vice President, Counselor Davis, that's exactly right. What this does is it puts the agreement together and establishes the accounts by which monies can flow.
Thanks for working on this. I know you've been pulling your hair out, working on this for months now to get it done, and I think it's great to see that all these different pieces are coming together to help our businesses. It makes a big difference, so thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, counselors, we have a motion and a second for R-184 as amended for a due pass. All in favor, signified by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? That passes unanimously, and that's gonna take us back to the beginning of final actions. Where can I find that? And we're gonna, this is item A, Counselor Gibson, Committee Substitute O-30.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Committee Substitute O-30 is amending the public purchases ordinance, requiring competitive bids for capital project change orders in excess of a certain percentage of the original awarded project cost. Going to be moving a due pass on this. And Mr. Melendres and the administration have put... on this. And Mr. Malendres and the administration have put quite a bit of work into this. He's not here today, but I'm glad to read the summary. This is an amendment to the City Public Purchases Ordinance 5-5-11 regarding capital project change orders. Per the ordinance, the purchase of goods, services, and construction for capital projects over $50,000 not procured through Central Purchasing Office shall be procured through CIP in accordance with the regulation governing the award and rejection of bids and offers and debarment of contractors for public works projects of the city of Albuquerque effective July 25, 2008. The regulation, however, is silent regarding change order limits and requirements for separate competitive bids on large change orders. This amendment will require that change orders for capital project contracts shall not exceed 35% of the original contract amount. Any change order that exceeds these limits may be awarded only through a separate competitive solicitation unless it falls within a recognized exception designed to allow reasonable flexibility. And the exceptions are a previously unknown or unforeseen condition at the time of the initial bid, unanticipated claims related to the project, or an emergency, or work that completes an additional segment or portion of the overall project that is functionally consistent with the bid, where a written justification is prepared by the Director of the Department of Municipal Development describing why the change is in the economic interests of the city and otherwise not consistent with the purposes and benefits of separate competitive solicitation. A copy of this justification would be, shall be provided to the city attorney or designee and the internal auditor prior to execution of any change order amendments to the contract. The amendment will also ensure that contractors must provide an increased performance bond adjusted in proportion to an approved change order for capital projects. And I don't know if we have anybody signed up.
We have one person, but we'll go with Councilor Jones.
Okay.
Councilor Jones.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Before the discussion on this, Councilor Gibson, did you want to move the floor substitute?
Yes, I'm, I'm, yes, of course. Thank you, Mr. Zaman. I, I move the floor sub for O-30.
Okay, Councilor, we have a motion and second. Councilor Jones.
We can vote on it.
You want to vote on it? Okay, we have a motion and a second for the floor substitute on committee substitute O-30. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of the floor substitute, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. And now, Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wearden, I think this is a question about this before, I'm sorry to do this before public comment, but there's only one question I have, and that is a, maybe an unintended consequence. And that is, would this, and I like the floor, the amendment, but is this a possibility of, just looking at the future, that we could hit a situation here where we have to go for bid on something that would therefore stop the construction? We could stop mid-construction on a project while we go out for, with an RFP and, and competitive bids on a change order that couldn't be done until we, we'd have to do that change order, award the contract, do the change order work, and then go on? Are you comfortable that this precludes that kind of thing? Because that could be devastating.
Mr. President, Councilor Jones, thanks for the question. In general, we're supportive of this, the floor substitute version of this bill. The, what it's going to allow us to do is still have the flexibility to have change orders when, when, when construction requires it, but not rely on it as a business practice to award projects through a change order when, when you should be out, be bidding a project as a whole instead of wholesale changes coming in. So, in general, we, we're happy with the project. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question directly on the scenario you brought up, but, but what we're confident in, in is, as construction is moving forward and we, we come into unforeseen conditions, we're allowed to change order things in appropriately to keep construction going. Where, where this is kind of holding it, the contracting back, and we agree with this, is not bidding a project, having another project that was sitting on the shelf saying, "I got good prices," and just adding it and not rebidding that project. So, that, that's, we're comfortable with that.
That does answer my question. Thank you. I just wouldn't want us to see that we'd have to stop a project mid-construction if we needed a change order. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. We do have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Tad Minenski.
Thank you. My name, Tad Minenski. It is important for people in Albuquerque to know. Let's, let's me tell you, let me tell the people of Albuquerque about project at Sunport. Hundred-three percent increase. That's more than double. How can you make, come up with these numbers as retired contractor, small contractor? And now, I am going back again. Yes, I, I never check up that price. I'm sorry. I stood even if I have to sacrifice my own wages. That's the way it was and that will be. Well, here is, that is city businesses. That's no problem. Another, Arton Central. Well, everybody heard, associate CEO to municipal, municipal development CEO. Don't worry, contractors will wait. Well, who's going to pay interest and so on? Or maybe swap of the land? Or maybe, of course, no doubt it's going to be under the table. That's from why I did say on the last meeting, that deeped, we can borrow from Y-17. And that's what was discussed. Now, I know, and also must mention, that's going to be deepening Y, Y-18. That's no problem. And who pays for it? All taxpayers. Because you speak about taxes, 20% gas only per gallon went up just this week.
Thank you. So, counselors, what we think, did we move the floor substitute O-30? So, now we'll move a deferral as substituted to April 17. Councilor Gibson, any other comments?
No, sir. Thank you, though.
Okay, we have motion and a second for deferral as substituted to April 17. All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Counselors, we have three bills left. It's past seven. Would you like to roll through?
Mine's a substitute.
Okay, great. Moving to Councilor Davis, item C, R-166.
Thank you, Mr. President. My item is actually a floor substitute and a deferral as well, so staff can help us with that. This is the final sort of compromise and settle bill on widening sidewalks in historic Nob Hill corridor to increase pedestrian safety, walkability, and commerce. I'll move the floor sub that's being passed out by staff now. It's a floor sub for R-17166.
Thank you, Councilor. We have a motion and second for floor substitute R-166.
And just to say what this does, essentially what we've done is we've worked with the administration, and I'm going to set aside a half million dollars from District 6 set asides, make them available for the design, working block by block with Nob Hill businesses and residents after the completion of the ART construction that's underway. The administration has set aside $600,000 to fund the promised but has yet unfunded International District Station that we will be adding at San Pedro. And it also allows us to come back and do some pilot projects to restore some removed pedestrian crosswalks in Nob Hill at the request of some businesses. So, it's a compromise bill. It's done with District 6 set aside and transit dollars that were identified by the administration. We think this works, and it doesn't prolong our ART construction, but let's some money reserve after construction for us to continue to evaluate these projects and give some assurance that if we come up with a solution, businesses know that we have the money and the resources to do them.
Counselor, we do have two folks signed up to speak. Would you like to hear them before we vote on the floor substitute? Okay, we have two, Tad Minenski and Paul Ryan McKinney. Welcome.
Thank you. My name, again, my name, Tad Minenski. Well, more money needs to be spent. That's going to be only half million after project will be completed for the sidewalks between, oh, excuse me, at Nob Hill neighborhood. And now, Nob Hill neighborhood is supposed to reach all the way to San Pedro. I don't believe that that's Nob Hill over there. You didn't, Councilor Davis, you don't live long enough here in Albuquerque to know the city and neighborhoods. I'm sorry. So, why you do? Look at what's going on right now on Central, on Zuni. Decreasing sidewalk. I mean, sidewalk still remain same, but lane decreased to one lane. Look at the backup during, during the weekend, weekend, during the five o'clock, eight o'clock, backup for three, four, five blocks. I got stuck several times. I have to go all the way around to get, even get by. I'm sorry. Your way of thinking just not worth a damn dime. You don't have, your vision not worth a damn thing. Just dipping more and more in a taxpayer pocket. Invest in this, for, invest into the poorer neighborhood over there, Trumbo, for trees, et cetera. Fix the sidewalks over there, Trumbovillage neighborhood.
Thank you. Paul Ryan McKinney is our final speaker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President and counselors. Thank you, Councilor Davis, for bringing this, this resolution forward. Obviously, I just heard the floor amendment, which sounds like it's a good compromise. And these, these business owners were expecting more sidewalk. And, and so, it didn't end up in the final bill, but they, they ought to get what they signed on for. And so, I just urge a due pass, and I'm glad that we could come up with a compromise with the floor amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we do have a motion and a second for floor substitute R-166. Any other comments or questions? Do you want to close on it?
I urge your support.
A motion and a second, R-166, to move a floor substitute. All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? So, then that takes us to moving a deferral as substituted to April 17. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or comments on the deferral? All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. And that takes us to item G. That is Harrison Gibson, R-176.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Move a due pass on R-17176.
We have a motion and second of a due pass on R-176. Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This resolution just adds language to the 2017 CIP plan and actually corrects an oversight and just clarify some set aside language.
Thank you. Is there a floor amendment? Do we have a floor amendment? Do we have a floor amendment?
Yes, Mr. Vice President. Councilor Gibson has a, an amendment. She would like to reallocate some of her 2017 set aside. She would like to create a $150,000 senior family community center enhancement set aside, taking that from her street allocation.
Great.
That's correct.
Councilor Gibson, amendment number one.
That is my amendment. Move the amendment.
Thank you, Councilor Gibson. We have a motion and a second for amendment number one to R-176. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor of the amendment, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. That takes us back to the bill. Council Harris or Gibson?
Urge your support.
Do you want to close, too? Councilor Gibson? Okay, we have a motion and a second, R-176 as amended. All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. And that takes us to the last item on the agenda, I think. This is carrying it for Councilor Benton. This is R-180, appropriating open space trust fund interest earnings for the acquisition of land designated for major public open space. I move a due pass.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have anybody signed up to speak? Okay, is there any other discussion or comment on this bill?
I believe there's still.
Okay, we'll look at that. Okay, we don't have any other, so I urge your support. R-180, all in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Looking now at R-17162. Councilor Lewis had a question on that?
I love that.
No? I think that completes the agenda.
Ms. Chair, I thought that was put on, on the agenda tonight for final action, or is it put on the next week's?
It was put on the agenda tonight for final action, but it was placed on the consent agenda because it was non-collaborational.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, Counselors, that does conclude the meeting tonight. So, thank you all very much. Meeting is adjourned.